Okay, it's five o'clock on Monday, November 20th, 2023, and we will call this city council meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone to our city council meeting. And if you would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Dale.
Don.
Here.
Harley.
Here.
Brad.
Here.
Rodney.
Tyler.
Here.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve today's agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a discussion. Roll call, Dale.
Don.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes. Motion carry. Thank you. You're able to spend some time with family and friends and just be grateful for the many blessings that we have in our community and our country. And to work up an appetite for that turkey dinner on Thanksgiving Day, be sure to join the Turkey Trot that morning. That's sponsored by the Algonah Rotary Club. Registration begins at eight o'clock and the trot at eight thirty. So we're gonna meet in front of the Chamber of Commerce there on State Street, and it's either a one-mile trot or five k, which equals about 3.1 miles. Do that, we'll work up an appetite. And then also today, I am happy to read another proclamation honoring the student athletes of Bishop Gergen High School. First, it was the girls' golf team, back-to-back championships with the girls' basketball team. And today, we congratulate the 2023 Bishop Gergen football team, earning the title of state champions in the Iowa High School Athletic Association's state football playoffs. So team, if you would like to come up and just gather here, turn and face the camera, and then if council, if you like we've done in the past, gather on each side, I will read the proclamation.
Let's all squeeze together as kind of possible. We're close in the middle there. We'll still see you.
I'm sure you can still see everybody. Okay. The city of Algonah proclamation honoring the 2023 Bishop Gergen state football champions. Whereas the dedication, sportsmanship, talent, and exceptional team leadership of the 2023 Bishop Gergen football team has enabled these student athletes to earn the honorable title of state champions in the Iowa High School Athletic Association's state football playoffs in the eight-player class. And whereas winning the state championship brought honor to Bishop Gergen High School, the city of Algonah, and Cassup County. And whereas the coaches, team members, managers, parents, and supporters were integral in guiding the team to victory through their unwavering support. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Rick Murphy, Mayor of the city of Algonah, do hereby recognize and publicly commend the Bishop Gergen High School football team for their tremendous achievement in winning the 2023 eight-player state championship, dated as 20th day of November, 2023. Congratulations. If you would like to come up, say a few words.
Sure.
I can do that, and then I think we'll be back for a little while.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
You bet.
There you are. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. I'll just, couple of words. Number one, thank you, Mayor Murphy, talk to me after the welcome back on Thursday. I wonder if we could get here Monday for this meeting. We said that would be great. I want to thank, number one, the city of Algonah and all of our supporters and our fans, the players. Without them, obviously, none of this would be possible. A great group of young men we have this year, and we have all of our seniors here that came with me tonight, and the support from the community, our school administration, fans, parents, goes unwavering, and the crowd that we had Thursday. I don't know how many former players that were there that have been playing since, you know, 32 years that I've been here, and then many years before that, we had a lot of alumni from previous years, and, you know, this was our fourth, fourth time since I've been coaching the state championship and our first, first title, and it was incredible and what a group of young men to, to win this with because if it wasn't for them, none of this, for coaches of the school, none of this would be possible. So my thanks to them, and I eternally gratefully indebted to them for all that they've done for, for Maysco. So thank you very much.
Okay. I mean, just to see everybody. All right, one, two, three. Very nice. Looks good. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great to lead you out. And best wishes in the future.
Thanks.
Good job, guys. So with that, does the city council have anything that they would like to share? Ask the mayor this. Okay, hearing none, then we'll move to update from the city administrator.
Just want to reiterate the mayor's congratulations to the Bishop Gergen team. We're in the office on, listened to that day and had to bite my tongue a couple of times at the very end because I don't want to jinx it with saying, "Jen, better start writing another proclamation." So it's very exciting and it's great for our community and the students. Just a, a few quick items. Thanksgiving coming up. City Hall will be closed this Thursday and Friday for the Thanksgiving holiday. And then just to note on a little bit of the musical chairs that we've had at the council level with elections, just as an explainer on some of the nuances of this last election. So Kathy DeRish had been appointed to fill Jody Alt's seat under the previous districts. This election was our first election under our new precincts established after the last census, which had Don Johnson and Jody Alt in the same district. So Don was elected to fill the remainder of Jody's term, so because that was an, Kathy's was an appointment, Don immediately assumes that seat. And then Kathy, who was temporarily in that role, she won the at-large position, but that is not seated until January 1st. So technically, Don's now representing that different ward, and then Kathy and our other newly-elected official will be joining us here in January. So that's, for the next three meetings, we will have that vacant seat, just kind of with the odd timing with having new districts drawn and some of those things of, just want a quick explanation on that.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to agenda item number seven. This is citizens' opportunity to address the council with any item that's not on the agenda. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Seeing none, then we'll move to the consent agenda, and that includes approving the minutes from the November 6th work session and regular city council meetings, approving a class, special Class C retail alcohol license for the Algonah Axe House, approve a Class C retail alcohol license for Miller Sports Bar and Grill, approve a cigarette and tobacco application for the Algonah Smoke Shop LLC, approve the department reports and the minutes from the various boards and commissions that have met, and approving the bills that are paid this night. Move to prayer.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, second from Don, any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, vote please, Dale.
Don.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes. Motion carry. Thank you. Move then to public hearings. Agenda item number nine, it's 5:10, and we'll open this public hearing regarding the environmental review information.
This is a public hearing required by the Iowa State Revolving Fund. We, for the summer upgrade, we intend to get a loan from the State Revolving Fund. This is one of the requirements. The environmental information document has been available at City Hall for anyone to see if they were interested. It, it's kind of a synopsis of where the wastewater treatment plant was, where we currently are, why we need to do the upgrade, all the different considerations that we have taken in, and all the conversations we've had with other entities such as Army Corps of Engineers, the DNR, et cetera. It's kind of a lengthy document, but we were required to have the public hearing.
So the council scheduled this public hearing at the October 16th meeting. The notice was published on October 19th. It's been available at City Hall since then, with the hearing being notified for today. Between then and now, we have not received any public comments.
It's 5:11, and we will close that public hearing. And again, it's 5:11, and we'll move to agenda item number 10 and open that public hearing. And this one is regarding a proposed amendment to the city's official zoning map.
We received a rezoning application for 109 North Lantry Street. It was referred to P&amp;Z at the second meeting in October, I believe. P&amp;Z met on November 1st, and they recommend rezoning the property. Do you guys want to come up and talk about what you plan to do at the property? Over here.
Yeah.
You gotta go up to the podium.
And maybe tell us your name and...
Sure. I'm Joel N. Seals.
Okay.
Tell us a little about...
What you intend to do at the property.
Yeah, so super rippling industry. It is, when you purchase it.
I bought it in 1998 from Larry Taylor. It was built in 1950 by Pioneer when it was zone heavy industrial for their use. When Larry bought it, I think it was in the eighties. It was, it had kind of fallen district area. You put on a new roof, put in the windows, tried it out, it was nice. So we own it for 25 years and kept it for Joel's use. He's only been a few more years over for him, more than the other 25 years.
So my contract usually is kind of, I continue to keep the 16th unit in on the north side and then on the southeast corner to start putting more, more stuff in and start doing some residential in it, keep my office in it, and then kind of expand and continue to kind of elect it, stand by and offer, I'm currently doing three classes of the land area, trying to keep all the good stuff there and other stuff there, let this like office and more process, you know, I'm trying to kind of expand what I can do with the land area and kind of build a more as a studio, keep it as a shop, and just kind of expand it and maybe all there and just build it.
The property is currently zone heavy industrial. They are asking for it to be rezoned to neighborhood service business district, which is a good transition between the downtown service business and the residential properties sitting there.
Good. Any questions or anything you want? All right. Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wish you well.
Yeah.
And there isn't a public comment on this one yet. So it's 5:14, and we will close the public hearing then on agenda item number 10. And again, it's 5:14, and we will open the public hearing, and this is a public hearing regarding zoning regulations.
So this is regarding a series of amendments proposed to Chapter 1704 of zoning regulations related to residential development within the city. The items included are permitting triplexes in the RS-60 single-family zoning district, allowing for construction of accessory dwelling units in residential districts under certain conditions, granting authority for administrative waivers to be made, adjusting minimum setback requirements for infill lot development on non-conforming lots or the front yard setback with conforming lots, and then updating and adding various definitions to that code section. I haven't received any comments.
No.
We haven't received any public comments on this one. Forgot to check with Eric before the building that she has, so.
Okay, it's 5:15, and we will close that public hearing then, and we will move to new business agenda item number 12, and this concerns the auditor's report of the city's financials.
Annually, the city undergoes audit. All cities in Iowa with population shootings greater than 2,000 are required to. Our audit for fiscal year 2023 ending June 30th, 2023, was performed by T.P. Anderson &amp; Co. It was discussed during the work session and it's been posted online. This simply just does, is a, is a simple motion to acknowledge receipt of the auditor's report, and that was completed.
Move to approve the receipt.
Sorry.
We have a motion from Harley, second from Don. Any discussion? Aaron did a nice job during the work session, so.
Title second.
Oh, Tyler, oh, I'm sorry, the fifth, that or the...
Sorry.
Vote please, Dale.
Don.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes. Motion carry. And agenda item number 13 pertains to transfer of funds.
Algonah Fiscal Utilities has proposed a inner fund transfer between the utilities. Bob Harrington is here this evening to give an explanation and kind of the formality of city council approval.
Okay, so I'm here for John Billstein. He had surgery earlier, so he unfortunately couldn't be here. What we're proposing to do is transfer $750,000 from the electric fund over to the water fund, and will be paid back by 2035. What this allows us to do, it's really a win-win for both utilities in that it's going to be a market-based rate. It helps out the water utility, which has had a lot of expenditures over the past couple of years on that, and so when we go in the future and maybe have to get more financing, we'll get better rates on that. This way, we don't pay any debt initiation fees or anything. We, we have the funds internally, so it just makes sense, makes more sense for our cut, our customer owners, if you will, on that. So I don't know if there's any questions or calculated the surpluses. We're fine on that. So the, the utilities board of trustees approved it back on November 1st. But seeing as we're a department of the city, we need approval by a council as well, so.
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
A motion from Brad, second from Don. Any discussion? Vote please, Dale.
Don.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes. Motion carry. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Bob.
And agenda item number 14 pertains to amending the city's official zoning map.
So this relates...
First reading.
Yeah, this relates to the public hearing we just had regarding reclassification of 109 North Lantry Street, proposed to be rezoned from heavy manufacturing to business neighborhood
Move to wait the first reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to wait the first reading. Any discussion? Vote please, Dale.
Don.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes. Motion carry. Move to approve the first reading.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the first reading. Any discussion? Vote please, Dale.
Don.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes. Motion carry. Thank you. And agenda item number 15 is ordinance pertaining to zoning regulations, and this also is a first reading.
Yes, another item that we had a public hearing on earlier and discussed during the work session beforehand. So as I mentioned during the work session, the recommendation for tonight's purposes is just to table the item, but we wanted to have the public hearing, wanted to discuss it as the full council, to go over what would be a proposed series of changes to our residential zoning code with the overriding goal of these changes is what can we do to facilitate more housing development and encourage that housing with greater density and flexibility. So there's three key pieces to the ordinance amendment. One would be allowing for those administrative adjustments on setbacks to fit with the built environment of the existing neighborhoods. They would grant the discretion to the zoning administrator, but residents would still have the option to go to the full board of adjustment to make that request for if it exceeded what the calculation would be based on this ordinance change. But some of our infill lots that, you know, the front yard and the backyard, side yards, by the time they get developed, with today's setback requirements, they're either, they're impossible to meet the standard or it's very challenging, so a lot of that flexibility. The other would be allowing accessory dwelling units in residential districts, so this would be subordinate residential structures. And then the third would be allowing for triplexes in RS-60, which is the highest density of single-family zoning. So this is the one topic we dinked into the work session, but right now in our residential zoning code, single-family, we've got three classes, RS-60, RS-80, RS-100, and those correspond with the minimum lot size, so minimum lot size of 6,000, 8,000, 10,000. Currently in those districts, duplexes are only allowed in RS-60. Duplexes aren't allowed in RS-80 or RS-100, and then triplexes are only allowed in multi-family. What planning zoning, when they, that multiple times on this matter, where they came out with the recommendation was to allow triplexes for the family if they can meet all the conditions in terms of minimum size that code requires for a habitable unit and parking. Part of this prompted kind of this discussion, when this is referred to P&amp;Z planning zoning for review, is in our older part of town, west part of town, where the majority is RS-60, over the years, whether it's, you know, been several decades before the zoning code was in effect in the 50s, or since then, we have a number of properties that have been converted in to triplexes. We also, as I started out, we also know we have a need for housing, and so wanting, trying to find that, that balance of, you know, these existing units, how can we allow them to continue to exist and stay in compliance? Some of the challenges that arise that if you go to bank financing to purchase one of these properties, they check the limits of zone, does it conform to that? If it doesn't, it's really difficult to get bank financing. So it does, you know, in terms of being able to see those lots improved or changed hands, it's challenging, so, but having some, making sure there's parameters in there, so if there's a, they would still have to meet those mainly on parking in the RS-60. The Planning Zoning Commission also discussed that length, the game of medical, trying to increase housing units and density, of whether or not to allow duplexes in RS-80 and RS-100. It was a split vote on that matter with the plan zoning, so they decided just to not make the recommendation either way on that matter. So that could be something that they, if the council wants to reconsider and, you know, look at duplexes in those districts, we can have that discussion now and at future meetings. But I think kind of some of the thought was with these other changes, as well as rolling out allowing for accessory dwelling units, which can be attached or detached in residential districts, if kind of implement that, see how that goes, and then look at, do we want to, you know, look at these other options for, for increasing density by allowing duplexes in those districts?
So this is one we don't want to act on until the full council, you say?
Well, I think more just kind of, since it's a whole series of changes to board of adjustment authority, you know, triplexes, ADU, I mean, I think kind of just for the sake of, I think those last two counts means we had a work session and just didn't get to it, you know, I can see that if there would be consensus tonight, I would feel better if we just, well, let's just pause and make sure we all understand this, because we haven't had an opportunity to discuss it with the whole group yet. But, you know, we'd be happy if there's any questions or on what's in there, kind of some of the alternatives that were discussed with plan zoning. This ordinance was based on the recommendations that they put out. We don't, as I mentioned with work session, on the accessory dwelling units, what the Planning Zoning Commission recommended, that those do have some restrictions on them, those restrictions being that to build an accessory dwelling unit, it would be by conditional use, so you'd have to go and get permission as a conditional use from the board of adjustment. Surrounding property owners would be notified and just to ensure that it fits in with the harmony of the general plan in the neighborhood. And then two, that there would be a deed restriction placed on any lot that's, you know, approved for and develops an accessory dwelling unit, and that deed restriction would not allow, require one of them to be owner occupied. So they, you know, an owner could live in the ADU and rent out the main or the primary residence, you know, or vice versa, but as this is written, they won't be allowed to rent out the ADU and the primary structure.
Move to table.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, second from Tyler to table this. Is there any other discussion?
Are there any kind of questions or topics areas they'd like more kind of background on or...
I think we have the information. I just need to read it over. Yeah, just to study more and, yeah, okay. Vote please, Dale.
Don.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes. Motion carry. Agenda item number 16 is resolution acknowledging the findings of the environmental review.
This corresponds to the first public hearing that we had regarding the environmental review document for the state revolving fund. This is more or less just a, a resolution for the documentation sake that it was public and be public hearing, so we can check that box when we submit our application.
Move to approve the resolution. Second. Motion from Brad, second from Harley. Any discussion? Vote please, Dale.
Don.
Yes.
Harley.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes. Motion carry. Agenda item number 17 is to approve the annual financial report for fiscal year 2022 and 23.
Yes, this and the next item are just annual reports. We have to sit through the state. A couple of years ago, we just decided we'll run them through the full council before we submit them. But the annual financial report is required to be published and submitted by December 1st every year, and then provides an overview of the actual revenues and expenses of the city for the previous fiscal year. Are happy to answer any, we could probably spend a couple hours if you want. If you govern on this, I'm happy to answer any questions that there are, so otherwise it's just a, a formality so we can submit it to this department management.
Well, I will say that, I'm sorry, the total revenues and expenses for the proprietary fund, the expenses was way wrong. I mean, that should be 3 million, 685,891. The proprietary fund.
Is that just an airline memo?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's on memo. Sorry. If you can find that on the actual...
It's correct.
It's reprinted on page nine, line 136. Page nine, line 136.
It's other than my type of memo.
And then I thought they entertained a motion to approve the report. So move.
Second.
Motion from Tyler, second from Brad. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Don?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes. Motion carried. Agenda item number 19 approves a payout application for the airport runway displacement.
Run next.
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Oh. Okay, you want to do that one next? Why not? Okay, let's take them in order. This, eighteen, that approved the annual urban renewal report.
This is another annual report due to the state by December 1st on our urban renewal expenses and uses in FY 2023. Urban renewals referred to as tax increment financing or TIF. So the city had three TIF projects funded in FY 23. The two private development agreements, Crimmins Investments, IDY Transfer, and then FP Algonha, the for OGNI Apartments, part of the development of those facilities, the city has a tax rebate with them that after they pay taxes, we issue a certain percentage back to it a certain amount of the time. So those are just payments made to those in compliance with the development agreements they have with the city. Then the third use was for fund reimbursements as part of the development of the Keek Industrial Park, the Snap-on Drive, the Indian Water Utility, and then the various grading sewer and sanitary work done out at the industrial park. That's being paid for with TIF over a series of about seven years, I think is what we have spaced out as of the projects that were identified as uses of our TIF that would just capture me to pay those funds back over time to encourage future tax reform.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Harley, second from Don. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Don?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried. Now we'll approve the payout application for the airport.
This is a big one, but pays application from pole excavating for the airport runway displacement project. The amount due to this application is $948,022.84. This is the bulk of the project. More or less all the grading and site work is done, so the turnarounds have been put in. All the storm sewer infrastructure has been installed. The site has been graded. There are some kind of areas on the west edge there with some trees that need to be removed and things like that, but this is for, as the payout indicates, the vast majority of the work here. The project was by contract done by the end of the calendar year. There are pace to be done by the end of this month, so it's gone really well. And then I would just remind everyone that we will submit this to the FAA and then get a reimbursement for 90% of the cost on this.
Excellent. I submitted to the FAA to pay for 1.79 for payout one and two.
Move to approve payout.
We have a motion from Don, second from Brad. Any discussion? Hearing done. Vote please, Deb.
Don?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes. Motion carried. Agenda item number 20, this is the second notification in terms of Airport Commissioner Josh Oninson that expires November 27th. And this is an appointment by city council, and this position will be eligible for appointment at the December 4th council meeting. So this is the second notification today. Agenda item number 21, this is the first notification of terms expiring in the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, the Housing Commission, and the Broadband Telecommunications Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission and Airport, those are appointments by city council, and the Housing Commission and the Broadband Telecommunications Commission are those are mayoral appointments. And those positions will be eligible for appointment at the December 18th council meeting. Which moves us into the last item on the agenda, which is a closed session. And this is to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate. And the closed session is in accordance with Iowa Code Section 21.51J. So I would entertain a motion for us to go into closed session.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Don?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.